I call to order the March 25th, 2024 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Would the Secretary please take roll call to see?
Commissioner Daniel Lovitz.
Here.
Commissioner Pluger.
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann. Commissioner Hankins.
Absent.
Commissioner Alms.
Here.
Commissioner Stanton.
Here.
Commissioner Klinger is here.
We have a quorum. Everyone should have received a copy of the minutes from the February 26th, 2024 meeting. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, motion to approve.
So move it.
And second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so next up on the agenda. Any communications, Carrie?
No.
And right into everything here. Item number five, ordinance number 2124, variance to allow a fence where there is no principal structure. Can we get staff report, please?
Yes, prior to Queen Oaks being dedicated and improved, the village purchased this property and demolished the home that was here to accommodate room for the cul-de-sac at the south end of the road. Then the village listed the vacant lot for sale and it was purchased by the resident directly across the street. Now this resident wishes to build a fence just across the very back of the lot. This fence would be up out of the floodplain. It would only be along the back of the property rather than fencing in the entire yard. But because there is no principal structure here, we cannot issue a permit for an accessory structure. And in this case, the fence is an accessory structure. Property owners applied for this variance from that regulation. Staff recommends approval of this variance with the condition that specifies that only the proposed fence, which would be a standard six-foot privacy fence, only along the rear property boundary be allowed. And the fence must be far enough away from adjoining fencing to maintain the area between the two fences. Thank you.
Is the applicant present?
Yep.
Can you please approach to be sworn in?
Evening, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand. Please tell me swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
So help me God.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Todd Eckern, address is 9818 Queen Oaks Drive, in Chesney Park.
Is there anything additional that you'd like to add and share with the commission?
Just that when we purchased the property, you know, that back lot line has always been scrub trees and brush. And we thought it was an eyesore, so we wanted to clean it up. We've had a tree service come through, clean up everything, mitigate any trees that could fall over onto other properties. And we'd like to put up a fence to make the property look even better.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners?
Can you look at the map there?
Yes, sir.
I was thinking it was directly, your house is on the left?
Yes, where your pointer is, yep, to the left there, yes, sir.
But the property you're talking about is the other one. I was thinking it was.
It's not the highlighted one.
Not the highlighted one.
Down below.
It's that one.
Okay, that's what I thought when I looked down. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right thing.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I see it's up high up on the hill there.
Yes, yep, very top of the hill.
Mm-hmm, okay.
If there's no further questions, you can, you may be seated.
All right, thank you.
There are a couple of people for public comment. Is this Michael Swicki? Is there something you'd like to add? Go ahead and approach the podium here.
I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand as well. You saw him swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Swicki, 9818 Katy Court.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
And what additional would you like to add?
I own, I live in the house on the top of the hill that backs up to his property. And I own the fence line that he was, is thinking about putting his fence behind. It's a three-and-a-half-foot chain link fence. We do have a view at this point of the river now with the land that's never gonna be built on down there. So a six-foot privacy fence would be a hindrance to that view. We've lived there a lot of years, it's taken a lot of years to get all that stuff cleaned up down there. I do not understand the thought behind putting a privacy fence. I do have some pictures of the property that he is putting the fence on from the road and from my house, looking out. My concerns are that if you build a six-foot privacy fence, two to three feet from my fence, the yard between those two still has to be maintained. And if you have a six-foot privacy fence, as many of you know that have yards, when that stuff gets mowed, the clippings are gonna have to go one way or another. Well, obviously, they'll wind up in my yard. This fence does not cover my whole property. So this fence would be half of my yard and stop. Do the house with the blue roof is my house. The gentleman's that's just below that is also here tonight, that's his yard. That fence would not cover his old backyard either. So if I was to step out on in my backyard, I'd see my fence and a half of privacy fence. I just, I don't think it would look that well. From in the road, the cul-de-sac that was put in, if you look up the hill, you have to almost struggle to see my house. I, I, once again, and with the fence being there, which side would be the pretty side of the fence? Would it be on my side or would it be on their side? If I was gonna build a fence, I'd put the pretty side out. So, and if he puts the pretty side towards his property, then there's gonna be all the structure on my side, which I would have to look at. Another place for weeds and stuff to grow. Like I said, I do have pictures of the properties, if anybody would like to see them.
Would you like to submit them as exhibits or?
Sure.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, we can keep.
Yep.
That's in my yard, looking down, I don't, I don't.
Oh, I see.
This is from the, that's from the cul-de-sac looking out, that's my neighbor's home. That's my home, from park in the cul-de-sac, taking out my vehicle.
Okay. Pass these around. Commissioners, have any questions?
Sorry, here's a, here's a little one. Just looking down on his property. Getting on my dog. Like I said, the fence that's in my yard, I believe it's a three or a four-foot fence, chain link. You can still see through it. I also have concerns that that is kind of a run for wildlife. We get fox, deer, we get all kinds of stuff. If you're not building this fence, where is this wildlife gonna go? It goes out, or to the woods where the power lines cross the river in the park. And there has been numerous, numerous times that dogs get loose and they come up and run my fence line. And by putting a privacy fence is not gonna stop that because it's gonna be open on either end. And my property is only half-covered, so my dog can still go down there and see him, talk to him, and then they're gonna run between them.
Okay. Was there any questions from the commissioners? Are you, what, you got the pictures?
Like you said, we've been there for 20-plus years. We were there when all of those houses were down there and finally got all that cleaned up, taken out. It's really starting to look very nice now. And as for the privacy aspect, once again, it is at the end of a dead end. So it's not like anybody's gonna be driving down there anyway to see it. Apologize for the snow, but, you know.
We have no control over it, as we found the other day, right?
Okay.
No, okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you very much, you may be seated.
Thank you.
We do have another comment from Brett Erickson.
Mr. Erickson, this is where you, I need to tell him swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. I do. My name is Brett Erickson, I live at 9810 Katy Court. My biggest gripe about is kinda going halfway through my property line. I've never really seen a privacy fence look good after five years. I understand wanting to improve the view of his lot and from his house, but I think it would be expensive, my view of the river, which I do enjoy. It's pretty much, I just don't want my view competed. With the nice word.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Erickson? Yeah, thank you, you may be seated. To open up for discussion, can we have a motion to approve the agenda item with conditions? And a second?
Second, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, any discussion then?
I guess I do have a question back to the mowing part, what we have to have. The gentleman back up who owns the property, how he plans on mowing it, I mean, it's a valid point.
Mr. Eckern, would you please approach the podium again?
So, so I do have a question, I mean, it's a valid point, how do you plan on mowing it since it is just kinda open back there, and I mean?
Well, we're hiring Love Spark Fencing to put the fence up, so they have the experience with this. So I'm looking for recommendations from, from the owner of that company for that. Understand it's a valid concern and part of the condition of this. So, that's as far as I've thought about that one.
Okay, all right, thank you. So along with that, did you, were you still waiting for the design? Cause there was a question as far as like which side to be in and out. And, cause in a typical lot, usually your structure is in and the privacy face is out.
Correct. And again, I was gonna refer to the Love Spark Fencing people. I don't have a problem putting the nice side towards them at all. And I kinda think it's the right thing to do. Cause if I had a neighbor that was putting up a fence, that's what I would like to see myself.
Okay.
I will add that our code doesn't regulate which way the good side needs to face. So if, if that's important to you guys, I would suggest adding it as a condition.
And as a condition, I have no problem meeting that condition as well.
I don't see it as a condition, I just thought that it might go, might be a nice olive leaf to at least share that information, so.
Absolutely.
That's where I was at.
Yes, sir.
I'll open it up to any other commissioners, if you guys would like it as a, as a condition.
I agree, I think it's a good condition. I mean, it's, that's what I thought it always was, actually.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, don't have, we have nothing in our code that says that the good side needs to face out.
Gotcha.
Sometimes people are unhappy about that, but. Yeah, if, if he were to apply for the fence permit and the good side faces in, I would still have to approve it cause there's nothing that.
Cause there's no, no rule one way or the other.
Unless, unless you guys added a condition to the, to the ordinance.
I would add it personally.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, add the condition that the good side faces the neighbors.
I was, I was just gonna question on when we say good side.
He's made the motion.
Oh, he's made a motion, so we need to, do you got a second?
You gotta get a second.
Before we can discuss.
Can I just amend my motion?
Okay, can you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, you wanna clarify good side versus?
Okay.
Okay, so I amended to good side out, I guess.
Well, I think that's what he said, I don't think we're struggling with good side. The flat side, the finished.
Finished, the finished side, yes, the finished side. Joining neighbors.
Motion is to have the finished side facing out. Facing the neighbors.
Facing the neighbors. Do we need to have him remotion it?
I'll, I'll.
Do you remotion it?
I'll make, I'll make a condition that the fence have the finished side facing the neighbors.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
All right, so this is a sub-motion, we still have the main motion pending, need to discuss and then vote on the sub-motion.
So I take it this is gonna be a wood?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, not PVC, I'm gonna look.
I don't think I have anything else to discuss about the sub motion. Okay, so now we need.
You can do it, all those in there.
Oh, all those in favor of adding them, adding the condition?
Aye.
Okay, so that has passed.
So that's been added to the main motion, it's been added as a condition, and now we're back on the main motion with those two conditions.
With those two conditions now. Okay, discussions around the main motion, any other thoughts or discussions around that?
I mean, I sympathize with the neighbors wanting to see the river, but it's his lot, so.
He could also plant 10-foot bushes all the way down there and just nothing he could do.
Yeah. He's doing it all to improve the lot, so, at least improve the condition of the lot. The looks of the lot, so.
Okay, there's no other discussion. Do the commissioner, have the commissioners read and agree with the findings of fact? No, sorry, thank you. Read and agree, agree with the findings of fact?
Yes.
Okay, maybe we have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Stanton.
I'm still thinking. Yes.
Commissioner Alms.
Yes.
Commissioner Danny Lovitz.
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger is a yes. Commissioner Pluger?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Eckern, this will go forward with a positive recommendation to the Planning and Zoning, Planning and Development Committee meeting on April 1st. It's at 5:30 and you should attend. Now, we recommend you attend. Okay, next up on the agenda, ordinance number 2224, item number six, variance from setback requirement. And we have staff report on this one.
Yes, our code enforcement inspector received a complaint about construction and debris at the subject property and discovered a new structure on the lot which was never permitted. The property owner then came in to apply for a building permit. However, this structure, which is a 16-by-16 shed, was constructed in the required front yard setback area. This is a corner lot and the shed is in the front yard of the side street, not the street that the home faces. This shed is only nine feet from the property boundary fronting that side roadway rather than the required 33 feet. This shed is behind a chain link fence and a row of arboretum, so it isn't a visual obstruction or really a nuisance. And there is a septic system on this property, so that likely does reduce the buildable area, although I'm not sure to what degree it reduces the buildable area. However, staff has recommended denial of this variance. Having this entire shed in the required front yard area is rather extreme and likely unnecessary to be that close. And there's no special circumstance that requires the shed to be that close to the roadway. The shed could have been placed in a permissible area if the applicant had applied for a permit beforehand. Thank you.
Okay, is the applicant present? Please approach the podium, we get sworn in.
Could you raise your right hand, please? You saw him swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. Name and address for the record, please.
Andrew Michael Scholl, 11205 PC Drive, which is.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anything additional you'd like to share with the commissioners?
I just built it there because the septic system was over back by the house. So that's why I kept it over to the right-hand side there.
Okay. Do you have a question?
I'm just trying to picture it on the lot.
Well, and so was there a reason that you went with the, the side closer to the street versus the back corner that wouldn't be, wouldn't be right next to the side street?
Ah, it's gotta be.
Yeah, you can see there's kind of a driveway where there's a trailer parked.
Yes.
That's, that's the, at the end of that driveway kind of is where the shed ended up, behind that row of trees.
So about where it says 43?
Yeah. Yeah, right around there.
How large is the shed?
Can you?
16 by 16, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, so is there a particular reason why you put it there and not like in the back corner, back away from the?
Well, for myself, sir, walking, arthritis, I'm old, that's why I put it a little closer.
Okay.
To be honest, yeah. I thought also possibly people being so, you know, in that far corner away, I couldn't see if anybody maybe, maybe breaking into it.
So why didn't you come get a permit to start with if you knew that your septic tank was in that area? Didn't you get some advice from the city?
Well, I had to clean out a few years before where the septic, the septic system was, was over to the left-hand side. So it was open in that area. Above the pools where the septic system runs. So I didn't wanna go anywhere farther over that way or any farther back. Close, open, not gonna disturb the system, not too far where I couldn't see if somebody was breaking into it or maybe call the cops.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dubu, Dubuzy is the north-south street, that's where the home faces. But it's in the required front yard area for Gregland.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
How far out do the field lines, lines go?
Just along the edge of a fence and along the, two of them run straight, how can I say? Like a fork like this.
Yeah.
And there's one across the back. I guess that's the drainage.
Pretty, pretty tight.
Yeah. So there is room to put that building that's compliant, right, down near lot? I can't imagine them septic lines running along the back.
Yeah, me neither. Yeah, we, we actually don't know because he hasn't applied for the building permits, which requires the health department approval. And the health department would confirm that the shed isn't on the septic field. But because we haven't approved the location, he hasn't asked for health department approval for this location.
Carrie, is this a concern in a garage?
It's an accessory structure in a garage.
It's an accessory structure in a garage.
Whatever you wanna call it. It's like a garage.
Need to drive away.
If there's no further questions, you may be seated, sir. There's one other person for public comment, Kirk Rasmussen? If there's anything additional you'd like to add?
Yes, I do. Kirk Rasmussen, 19, 918 Gregland.
Anything additional?
No, I might be able to clear up a little bit of the questions and where things are, yep. I may approach the viewer.
Sure.
I am in favor of it. This is my property, just so you know where, where I'm at. He does have a 10, 12-foot arboretum is all the way around. So nobody even knows the, the shed is there, and it is shed-sized with shed doors. You can, you can't get a car in it, so it should not be considered a garage. His septic comes here and here. And the shed was placed pretty much, it's, it's right here where it has access for his lawn and garden to go right straight in. If it were back here, the only place out, other than the septic, being on a septic line, is actually here, which is still in this front yard, is that what you're calling this, a front yard?
Yeah.
Which, I have never heard of that rule. I've always thought that your house is here, that's a side yard, and he would be within the variance of a side yard.
When you put it on.
So I'm just saying, my personal, I've never heard of that rule, and when I saw this come up, I thought, hmm, that's new. But that's, that's where the shed sits, right here. And the only place you can see the shed is from this corner. And he does have a gravel pad leading to it. So, I mean, it's, it's really, in my opinion, placed in about the best spot he could place it. Because he does have patio here. See, tucking it up this way, you're, it's right here, you can't really tuck it because of the pool. It, he would be really restricted, so I think looking at the property, it's, it's in one of the best places, it's a four. And, and it's not a, drainage is here, utilities are here, there is, there, it's not impeding anything whatsoever, in my opinion, structurally or engineering-wise, so. That, that's what I'm saying about it, just, I see no negatives to where the structure is located.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rasmussen? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Carrie, how wide is that right-of-way?
I believe it's a 66-foot right-of-way, and that's why the required setback is 33 feet.
Talking south, right?
The Gregland right-of-way?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can see the lot line, and the road's always in the middle and.
Right.
Somewhere in the middle.
Probably 23.
So pause for just a second to open up for discussion, let's go ahead and.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, nope, that's good. We can have a, a motion for the agenda item to open it up for discussion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you very much. Nope, nope, that's too bad. Okay, now, yeah. So part of the building permit, they would have come out, the health department would have looked at where all the lines are.
We can't approve a building permit until the health department approves the location when there's a septic field involved.
Then you would have told them, you can't put it there, you have to go back to 33.
Well, they basically lined up with that southern edge of the house behind there.
I, I, I guess I'm not disagreeing that looking at things, that's not the optimum place for it, but if we had known ahead of time. And the shed is not built.
It is built.
Oh, it is fully built.
Cement slab and everything?
Not sure.
Is it on a cement slab?
What is it on then? Dirt? Is it?
It's not sand, it's still the shed.
I get it.
Boot point, I mean, if the health department says no, what's the difference if we say yes? Is if they're not gonna prove it?
Well, because we aren't gonna, when he does apply for building permit, either with a variance or with having to move it, whichever way the board decides to vote, that would be the plan that the health department reviews. Right now, we don't know if he can keep it in this location. Right now, we don't know if he can keep it in this location.
He still has to get his mortgage.
You may not have anchored it correctly.
He's got to get the, and then the health department comes out and they say, no, you can't have it here.
Well, would the health department have any problem with it being there? That's more us than health.
Because it's in the front yard.
Yeah. They would have a problem if it was right on top of the septic, but not where it's at currently.
Our concern is it's in a front yard. And there wasn't a question. Question before you is, front yard.
Front yard nine foot from the?
From the property line.
From the property line. And it's not even close to, like, twenty foot away.
Yeah, the, based on the dimensions of the garage or the shed, the entire shed is in the required front yard. The whole thing is in the area south of the home.
It's unfortunate the layout of the land doesn't allow what he wants to do.
It's kind of the nature of a corner lot.
Yes.
Being on two.
Two some counts.
Well, obviously, the neighbors here, it says he doesn't object, but someone who lived immediately to the right might say, I don't want to look left and see a garage in this front yard, because it's his front yard. But he's, he's here and he says he doesn't object.
Okay, have the commissioner any other discussion topics?
In any event, yes, reply for building.
Yeah. Yeah, and it will have to be inspected.
And if we say yes, they'll have to still get permanent, permanent and potentially move it if the permit isn't approved. Okay. If there's no other discussion, then have the commissioners read and agree with the findings of fact?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Secretary, can we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fluger? We have to say no. Commissioner Klinger is a no. Commissioner Danny Lovitz?
No.
Commissioner Olms?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanton?
Yes.
Okay, so this will move forward with, without a positive recommendation to the planning and development meeting on April 1st. They'll then weigh it and discuss it again. You are encouraged to attend that meeting at 5:30. Thank you. Next up on the agenda, ordinance twenty-three, twenty-four, well, seven, eight, and nine, we're going to discuss together, but there are three separate items here. Ordinance twenty-three, twenty-four, variance from front setback requirement. Twenty-four, twenty-four, variance from side setback requirement. And twenty-five, twenty-four, variance from building material industrial design standard. Carrie, we have staff report.
Yep, like you said, these three variance requests all pertain to the same proposed storage building. The building would be on the same lot as the Hennig building at ninety-nine oh four North Alpine, although it would actually be a little bit closer to the ninety-nine hundred building, just south of there. The storage building is proposed to be thirty feet from the front property boundary, five feet from the side property boundary, and it is proposed to have primarily a steel exterior, which our industrial design standards prohibits. Typically, the required front setback for industrial buildings is only twenty-five feet. Like I said, they propose going thirty feet back. However, the subdivision plat for this property shows required sixty-five foot setback here. This building would be closer to Alpine Road than the principal buildings on either side of it, but it would still be fifty feet back from the actual edge of the roadway. And staff recommends approval of this front setback variance. We don't see that being an issue or a concern being that far back. Also, even though this building would be only five feet from the side property line, rather than the required ten feet, you really can't even tell where the property boundary is here because of how these Hennig buildings are all grouped together in this area. And clearly, the properties are owned by, both owned by Hennig. So staff has no issue with the side setback variance. We recommend approval of that as well. As for the variance to allow this building to have a steel exterior, staff is recommending approval with the condition that the entire front of this building facing Alpine Road have a brick facade that matches the brick on the front of the Hennig building nearest this structure, which is the one at ninety-nine hundred North Alpine. Although the other three facades would still be steel, we feel that by requiring brick on the front-facing facade, this would be a nice-looking building and it would conform with the character of this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Please approach.
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Nathan Hillby. You want the address of the building or? Ninety-nine hundred North Alpine Road. Okay. Sorry.
No worries. Anything additionally you'd like to share with the commission?
No, just that we, you know, appreciate Machesney Park and all we've been able to do together. And this is another thing we're asking for, to continue to grow the business and, you know, grow it here in Machesney Park. It'd be a big benefit to the company, allows us to free up our floor space and bring in more jobs into the main factory.
Any questions for the applicant?
Um, I just, I just wondered, there's a front door to it at the brick, brick area, side door? What's the flow of the building? I'm, I'm just having a hard time figuring out what the flow is.
There's a site plan in your packets.
The packet this month is huge.
There would be a driveway entering the building from the back.
From the back?
Yeah.
All right, I apologize.
No problem.
I did not pay attention to that.
That's okay. Yeah, we, we have a, like a service road already. We kind of, we'd use to kind of attach a garage door to, so we get in and out. We'd have a door there and then a door on the side, and then a path kind of going around it.
So it flows into the whole company campus?
Yes. So it'd be accessible by, by all three buildings on the current pavement that we have, current white top that we have.
Which is impressive, by the way.
Yeah.
That's wild.
Very nice. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I see it all right now. That's the only question I had.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Is there any reason why it can't be even with the other ones? I'm just, again, I can't picture this.
So if we go too far?
You can get up on.
So, yeah.
Sure is a good reason.
So we, this is the proposed setback. We go further away from the road, we start to get into this turn here for our truck. So we're trying to, trying to be back here and the size that we need, you know, referred to make sense for us, don't refer to be useful, is the sixty by one-ten. So that's why it does hit the, you know, that's why we need the variance application that has the setback. You know, we look for, still, other, other buildings that are available and they don't have all the access that we need or, or the space requirements that we need for either renting them or purchasing them. And we just create a lot of extra wasted material handling time to move our product three or four times to get back into the building to promote and correct them trucks. And so at the end of the day, this is really the best spot for us to be able to get our product and service our customers in a timely fashion, so. Yeah.
And then, so it is just in and out from that, that back driveway?
Yep, yep. There's a door here and we go right, right in here into the building. You know, we'll load our trucks up either there or take it back in where we have a dock here.
Gotcha. Okay.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
If there's no other questions, you may be seated. There is a public comment on this. Greg Edwards?
Edwards, you is ready? I'm sorry, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. Name and address for the?
Greg Edwards, and I have the building to the north, ninety-nine, ten North Alpine. The building directly north to there. And I really just came tonight because I'd received the letter and I was curious as to what, I didn't know what the variance of the proposal was. Because we're on that immediate north side. It appears to me that they're, they just want to build another building to the south side for a structure. Will that be attached to the, to the current building?
No.
No.
No, okay, okay. That was our big concern because we have a lot of water runoff from the expansion that they did on the building now. So all the water runs between their building and our building, and we were just concerned if they were building more roofs, structure, that there would be adequate runoff, you know, for the ditches. So that was all our concerns, just to make sure what was being done. But a, a freestanding building on the other side doesn't, doesn't affect me at all.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's all. We were just here to find out what, what it was.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so moving into, we discuss some more together?
You can discuss them all together, ultimately only the motion. Watered it up.
Okay, yeah.
But so you can go ahead and discuss without any motion if you choose.
Okay.
And then like any discussion on the whole project.
Yep.
Excuse me. Hang on. Sure. Come on up. Come on up. Just a point of clarity. There, there is pipes in a storm drain going underneath that we will tie all the runoff water into. I think art design is working on that for us, that we would pipe all the runoff water into the, into the storm drain. I think I'm saying that right. But there is a plan to adequately, you know, capture that water and make sure it moves so it doesn't, you know, become a pond somewhere or anything like that. But it, it moves to where it needs to go. So just a, just a point of clarity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we can open this up for discussion for all of them as a whole before we get into specific motions. Any?
No, I, I'm glad you clarified that because the neighbors do have a legitimate concern. You know, all the, all the water, all the rooftop, all the asphalt, it's got to, the water's got to go somewhere. Don't want it in my yard, you know, so that's, that's good to clarify that.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions, so I was going to bring it up, but now I don't have to.
The only question I have, Carrie, is there a particular reason why this one's, is set at sixty-five or is it just?
I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, it just seems out of place, so.
But that is to how far back the other two Hennig buildings are. They're right at that sixty-five foot setback. But there's, this isn't, it's only, in my, in my staff report, it's not that major of a roadway. You know, this, where you would see wider setbacks. I'm not sure why it was done that way.
Yeah, a little two-lane, two-lane Alpine. It's not, you know, maybe, I don't know.
I think it's for one, if a truck ran off the road, semi.
You had all the runoff, right? Any other discussion? Okay. So then, looking for a motion for ordinance number twenty-three, twenty-four, variance from front setback requirement with conditions.
So moved.
Okay, and since there's no other discussion, do the commissioners have read and agree with the findings of fact?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Klinger is a yes. Commissioner Fluger?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanton?
Yes.
Commissioner Olms?
Yes.
Commissioner Danny Lovitz?
Yes. Okay, so that will move forward with a positive recommendation. Next up, a motion for ordinance number twenty-four, twenty-four, variance from side setback requirement.
A motion.
No more discussion. So do we have the commissioners read and agreed to the findings of fact?
Yes.
And roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Olms?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fluger?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger is a yes. Commissioner Danny Lovitz?
Yes. And so that will move forward with positive recommendation. Next up, ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-four. Can we have a motion for twenty-five, twenty-four, variance from building materials industrial design standard with the conditions?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and have the commissioners read and agree with the findings of fact?
Yes.
Yes.
And roll call vote on this one, please.
Commissioner Danny Lovitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Olms?
Yes.
Commissioner Stanton?
Yes.
Commissioner Fluger?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinger is a yes.
Okay, so that, all three of those will move forward with positive recommendation to the April 1st meeting of the planning and development committee. With that, next up, any other business to discuss? Everyone's leaving, so no more public comment? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, did we get a second? Yeah, did we get a second? You got a second, okay. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Maybe adjourn.